Okay, are we good to go?
You are, you are. We have Amherst Media in the house with us. You have your quorum of the board. My computer says 6:33. I think we're good to go, Mr. Colton.
Okay, well, welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of August 7, 2004. My name is Bruce Colton. Chair and vice chair are not immediately available this evening, and as the clerk of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33. This meeting has been recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 221 and extended by Chapter 2 of Acts of 223, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted by remote means using the Zoom platform. Zoom meeting link is accessible to the meeting agenda posted on the town's website calendar listing for this meeting, or you can go to the planning board website webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship, or despite best efforts, economic hardship, we will post an audio or video recording, transfer of our other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I take a roll call. When your name is called, unmute yourself, answer in the affirmative and return to mute. Karen Winter.
Here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Doug Marshall.
President.
And we have apologies this evening from Jesse Major, Janet McGowan, and Karen Winter. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raised hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember please to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware that the board will not respond to comments during the public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when determined appropriate by the board chair. Please indicate that you wish to make a comment by clicking the raised hand button when the public comment is solicited. If you have joined the meeting, the Zoom meeting, using a telephone, please indicate that you wish to make a comment by pressing the star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name, address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds there, a lot of time, their participation may be discontinued from the meeting. Minutes, I don't believe we have any minutes for review. Is that correct?
That is, we have minutes that have been completed, but they weren't completed in time for this meeting.
The second item on the agenda is public comment. Whoops, something funny happened to me there. We have two members of the public attending, and it is the customer chair to read those in attendance, and we have James Polyogolopoulos. I believe that might be the person from WAMC and Tom Reedy. Those are the two persons in attendance. If either, or Tom, I guess, will be part of the applicant's case, so I don't expect Tom to be making a public comment. James, if you wish to make a public comment at this stage, please indicate by raising your hand. I'm not seeing a hand raised. We have but two members, so I think we will move on from the public comment period to the public hearings, the first of which is a site plan review. It is 6:38. In accordance with provisions, we are going to open this public hearing, the site plan review. In accordance with provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted, has been posted, and it is held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. We are at 6:35. We are past 6:35, so we can continue. SPR 2024-11, University Drive Amity LLC, University Drive at Amity Street, requesting a site plan review for approval under Section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw to redevelop an existing commercial space into an 85 residential unit and commercial space, mixed-use development, including parking, landscape, lighting, and stormwater infrastructure. Parcels 13B-18, 27, 28, 54. Those four parcels in the BL zoning district. Board member disclosures, any of the four attending board members have anything they wish to disclose in relation to this application? Seeing no hands. At this point, I think we would call on the applicant to present. Pam, can you? It will be... Oh.
Mr. Reedy has been brought over to the panelist.
I didn't. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the... He was gone from the attendees, but I didn't see him on my screen. I thought, Tom, you're in limbo.
He was there.
So just, sure, simply, Tom Reedy, Attorney General Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of U Drive Amity and its application, as the chairman noted. Not providing any testimony tonight. We're just requesting a continuation to September 18. I had provided an email to Ms. Brestrop. I want to say it was maybe Tuesday morning after the site visit. And really, we want to take the opportunity to talk to the conservation agent. We got her comments. I've already talked to the engineer. They're all addressable. I frankly don't expect any plan changes, but we still want to at least give the courtesy to talk with Erin. And we haven't submitted an NOI yet. We expect to do that probably the end of this month. We have all the information, the data sheets. You've seen the plan, stormwater report, et cetera. We just want to pull that together and again, talk to Erin about it and get it to her. And so, understanding the board's not going to make any decision until they have some input from Concom. We just thought, you know, for that reason, and I know, I see Doug's name, but I know he's not watching this live. I know Jesse's not here, and you're missing a couple of other board members. We just thought, let's just not give any testimony. Let's kick this over until September, and let's have the first substantive hearing at that point. So, that's it.
Okay, so we have a date certain. Sounds like you and Chris have discussed a date in September that we could move to, move continuance to. Is that correct, Chris?
That is correct, yes.
And that date would be?
Mr. Chair.
Doug?
Yeah, I just want to correct the applicant that I am in attendance this evening.
I think he noted your attendance, but that you weren't visually connected in some way. But anyway, Doug Marshall is attending as a planning board member. We have a quorum. There are four of us. Chris, the date?
Yes, the date is September 18, and I would suggest 6:35 because that would be the first case on that night's agenda.
Do I, I don't, well, do I have a motion to continue to that date at 6:35? I think Doug is moving. I guess, Karen, do you want to second that? Since I'm looking straight. Yes. So we have a motion seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion at this point from any Fred? Put his hand up, Fred.
I am not. There we go. Just curious. Part of this process is going to involve combining four parcels into one, which is presumably under Item 7 on the agenda, the, I mean, I'm sorry, Item 6 on the agenda, A and R subdivision applications. Are we going to be, in the interest of efficiency, going to be doing those tonight?
No, there's no plan to do that tonight.
Yeah.
We haven't submitted the perimeter plan yet, Fred, but we will either as a condition of approval prior to receipt of a building permit or during the process.
Okay, thank you.
There was a site visit, I should note, but I think we won't give a report on that site visit until next time. There may indeed be another site visit, given the absence of some of the board members. So we'll hold that, simply noting that there was a site visit, but no report will be given. We're not taking public comments on this item as we would ordinarily do because we have not taken any testimony, so therefore they will. It's inconsistent and improper to take public comment when we haven't had any testimony, but there will be plenty of time for that in September. I think, if there's any, Karen, you've got your hand up.
Oh. No.
Is that a legacy? Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we'll have a new planning board member joining, we hope, Peter, in August, and that I've checked with KP Law, and they said that as long as we don't take any testimony tonight, that that new panel member would be able to join the panel for this application. And that would be a person who's taking Janet McGowan's place. So I just wanted to let you know that.
But do I understand correctly that even if we did take testimony tonight, if the person, the new person was certified that they had watched the recording, they could join the discussion and be a voting member?
That's not the case in this instance because that person is not a member of the planning board yet.
Oh. Interesting. Thank you. Useful clarification. Do I see any other comments? Hands? I don't. I think we're ready to take the vote on the motion to continue the meeting to September. I've forgotten the date.
September 18.
September 18, so 6:35. Moved by Doug, seconded by Karen. I'll take a roll call, starting with you, Doug.
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And Fred?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so that's four of us. That's unanimous of those present. Thank you, Tom. I think we'll see you in September.
See you in September. Thanks a lot.
If not before with some other, some other project or other that you may have in your, up your sleeve. Thank you. Goodbye. So, old business, item number four on the agenda. Topic's not reasonably anticipated in the 48 hours prior. Do we have anything, Chris?
We don't have anything as far as I know. Nate and Pam, is there anything?
No. Any board member? No, moving, new business. So there's an item of new business, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's Certificate of Assessment for this financial year. I think I've I think I've seen this, but only insofar as I'm a member of the commission representing the town. This is the, Chris, I'm correct, this is the amount that all towns present, and that's prorated on the basis, I think, of population or maybe other things as well.
That's correct. And they always send us a letter to to share with the planning board. It's addressed to Kimberly Mew, the principal assessor.
Yes.
And then the chair of the planning board always gets a copy, so we have been, we have typically sent them to the planning board members, all the board members. And the assessment for this year is $7,347.29 for Amherst. But this gives us a list of all the different towns and cities in the area and what they pay.
Yes, it's quite a spread. You can see that Cummings is $155, so and someone, what's that? Middlefield is $72. Anyway, I looked at this and I thought, wow, that is a hell of a spread. I'm not sure what Springfield is. It's 29,000, so. But this is just for our information. Is that correct? We are not required to take any action in regard to this, or am I wrong about that?
You do not need to take any action. It's just for your information.
Okay. Does any board member have any questions related to this presentation?
I actually have no idea what this is, what this money is for.
This is one of the revenue streams that supports the Pioneer Valley Planning Corporation. The corporation has member townships that are listed as municipalities in the left-hand column. There are many of them. Some of them are very small, and some of them, like Springfield, are quite large. And there's a prorated assessment, and I'm not sure what the total is, Chris, if you can roll down. It's, this is a part of the, what the planning commission uses, needs to sustain itself, but it gets revenues from various other sources, mostly from grants on the one hand, or consulting, because the members, the specialist staff of the commission are often paid, do consulting work on, you know, through the commission, so it's part of the revenue stream that supports the commission. Fred?
Yeah, I was just noting that with some interest that Northampton, the Northampton assessment is a lot smaller than the Amherst assessment.
It is. Yes, it mixes around. It's, I'm not quite sure. Speaking as the representative on the board, I confess that I'm not sure how that assessment is figured beyond prorating, if there's other services that the commission provides Amherst that doesn't provide other towns. Chris, are you aware of some easy explanation as to why Northampton is significantly better than Amherst?
I don't know the reason for that. I don't know. I mean, we can apply for various technical assistance from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but so can all of these other cities and towns. We also hire them from time to time to do things for us, like they did the historic preservation plan update. But I don't know any reason why our yearly assessment would be so much more than Northampton. It's about, what is it, $2,000 more roughly?
I think so. So it's 50% more? Or maybe 40%?
And we have 10,000 more people than they do according to this.
Oh, okay.
So that might be part of it.
That would be certainly part of it. I think, Fred, that's probably a large part of the difference. Would you like me to pursue this with the director?
No, that's, I don't want to take any more time on this.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to be a robust organization. I've we've seen periodically the reports that they give us, annual reports of what they've done in the course of the year and so forth. They seem to be well-led and quite active, and it's a fairly large staff. I think we're fortunate to have them in our, in our region. Nate?
Yeah, I mean, every town's assessed the same rate. It's just based on population, so we're not, you know, we're not being charged more disproportionately. It's just, you know, our population based on the census is that much bigger than Northampton's.
Yeah, but, but though, I mean, if we wanted to get into the weeds, that a good portion of that population isn't here for a notable portion of the year, but I don't suppose we're going to, anyone's going to challenge the assessment that's it would take more time, more money than it would be worth to save $1,000. Okay, seeing no more, I think we can move to the any new business topics not reasonably anticipated? Chris?
No, no topics, no.
Form A, A and R subdivision applications?
We don't have one for tonight, but we have another, we have one coming for the 21st.
Okay. Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications?
We received a preliminary subdivision application for property on Chutesbury Road because the applicant wants to freeze the zoning on property that is proposed for solar development. So you'll be seeing that, I think, on the 4th of September. It's a kind of perfunctory process in that they don't actually want to build a subdivision, but there's something in the state law that allows them to freeze the zoning on a property. In other words, they wouldn't have to abide by any new solar bylaw that came into effect during the period that they are applying for permits. You'll be seeing that. You've seen these before. I think Mr. Robleski did one on his property on Main Street.
So, maybe Doug has, but the rest of us haven't been on the board when Robleski was around. Fred, you have a question? Comment? Fred, you are muted.
Oh, sorry. I think you may have skipped over upcoming ZBA applications.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I, yes, I didn't. I scrolled too far down. Well, we'll get to that. Well, we've, so Chris has given us the, an upcoming subdivision application probably the, well, the September meeting, anyway, whether that's the next meeting or not, we'll see. Going back to upcoming ZBA applications. Thank you, Fred.
The one that I am aware of but can't speak profoundly on is the fact that the comprehensive B permit, the application has arrived, and maybe Nate or Chris, if you want to say a few words on that?
Probably Nate would be the best person.
The comprehensive...
Yeah, the wayfinders.
The wayfinders, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they submitted their 40B application and a transmittal has gone out. You know, I'm assuming in September, October, the board could hear a presentation about that and provide comments to the ZBA. You had done so already a bit ago, and they, you know, the architects changed the design around a bit in response to some of the comments from the board. And so now it's, you know, going to the ZBA. The first hearing's August 29. It'll probably take, you know, four or five months or more to get through.
Okay. That's upcoming. Questions or comments? Do we, we don't need to make a decision about that at the moment because it's not actually here?
No, that's right.
Okay. Planning board liaison and board committee reports. I have nothing to report on the, on the planning commission. Doug, the CPA committee, do you have anything to report on that?
I do not have anything new on that.
Okay. Karen, DRB?
Nope, nothing.
Chris, CRC?
I'm continuing to meet with the CRC about the solar bylaw. They're working their way through it and hope to have a more refined draft to send to the town council.
I see Fred's hands. A question of Chris?
Yeah, a question for Chris. To what extent would this bylaw be affected by, or not affected by the stalemate in the legislature regarding things like solar energy?
Well, this bylaw is our, our own bylaw that covers large-scale solar installations, but generally speaking, we wouldn't have an installation that's large enough to really be very much affected by the state law. The only thing in the state law that might affect Amherst is that they require, they are hoping to require that permitting happen within a 12-month period, which is kind of a short period of time for some of these large projects, so the state law has kind of two tiers of projects. Anything 25 megawatts or over is going to be, they're proposing that it be handled by the state. Anything 25 megawatts, or excuse me, anything under 25 megawatts would be, continue to be handled locally, but there would be that timeframe where you could only spend 12 months on the review process, which, to me, you know, if, given that you have to go to the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, it just is, seems very short. But in any event, nobody asked for my editorial.
And just to note that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commissions had a number of presentations on this, some of which I've circulated through to the staff and so forth, so if some of this stuff hits us, we have that organization's material is a resource for us as well. Report of Chair, Doug, do you have a report?
I do not, Bruce, but I would like to thank you for standing in for me this evening.
My pleasure. Chris, report of staff? Well, I guess there's one thing to report.
There is one thing to report, that I will be planning director until the 27th of September, and then I'm going to be retiring. And I've offered my services to the town to come back part-time after that, if they need me, they want me and need me. But otherwise, I'm going to be retired, so.
Congratulations. Do we, my wife asked me whether the town was, had begun a search process for a replacement, and I said I did not know the answer. What's, that's, so that would be my question, out of curiosity.
I think Paul Buckelman is going to begin a search process, but he has not begun one yet.
So, can I ask perhaps, I mean, it's, my answer to my wife was, well, you know, we've got some competent people in the planning department, and we've noted in town recently, that such as with the school, for example, that instead of going and looking for a new principal straight away, we had two people who were co-principals. That was also true of the Common School, and it gave people opportunities to develop leadership capabilities and so forth in the interim term, I guess, so I'm, I thought that maybe that's the plan that's in the town manager's mind, and and I have to say, I was kind of vaguely, curiously supportive of such an idea, because I think it's, except, of course, that means there's one fewer people operating.
Well, we are looking for a planner to replace the planner who left in May.
Yeah.
And so we still have that vacancy, and then when I leave, there will be a vacancy. I I could tell you where my heart lies, which is that I hope that Nate Malloy has a very good shot at becoming planning director. I think he's really talented and smart and knows so much about the town, but it will be a town manager decision. But I also wanted to say that the city of Northampton went out for a nationwide search, and they ended up hiring the person who had been there, and she's an excellent planning director, Carolyn Mish. And she's an excellent planning director, Carolyn Mish, so they made the right choice there, so I hope that Amherst also makes the right choice.
This was off to Wayne.
That's right, yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, well. Keep, keep visible, Nate. And, and if there's anything I can, I mean, we, the board will be, try and be helpful and so forth, because we recognize that you're continually understaffed and now about to be even more soon. Well, I guess that's it. Nothing more to report from staff?
Can't think of anything right now.
I guess I'll move adjournment. Do we? I'm not sure whether we need, how do we do this? Is that a second hand, Karen? Yes, I always saw one voted by clicking the red button at the bottom of the screen, but that's what I'll be doing right now. Thank you all and I look forward to seeing you again shortly.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, we, we don't need to make a, it'll be our, let's see, we are on, this is an irregular meeting, this is a second, a second Wednesday, so.
The first, first Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
Yep.
Oh, right, yes, it's, yes, I beg your pardon, it's a, it's this, very seldom do I have my N A C F meeting the night after the planning board meeting, but in, in a month when, which starts on Thursday, then that happens, that's why I'm confused. Thank you all, I'll see you maybe in two weeks. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.